Welcome to the second in a series of political candidate forums in advance of the August 23rd primary election. This forum is a cooperative production of the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee, the Tallahassee Democrat, and WFSU Public Media. Our candidates are running for Leon County Board of County Commissioners, District 3. I'm Tom Flanagan from WFSU Public Media. I'm joined by William Hatfield from the Tallahassee Democrat, and Danielle Irwin from the League of Women Voters of Tallahassee. We'll be questioning the candidates on various topics. So let's get a quick look at the ground rules and meet our candidates.
Excellent. Thank you, Tom. The candidates for County Commission, District 3, sitting left to right in alphabetical order are Joey Lamar, Rick Miner, who is the incumbent in this race, and Damon Victor. Welcome, y'all. For those of us watching us on social media, please hit the share button and help all your friends see today's discussion as well. So here is how the forum will work. We will rotate which candidates get to answer first. We have a lot of questions, so we're going to ask candidates to keep your answers to about 60 seconds. We'll tell you ahead of time what the time limit is. Some of the follow-ups may be shorter timeframes. We will keep time, which we will ding a bell when your time is up. This is highly technical. This is what the bell will sound like. Has a nice echo reverb. At that point, we would ask that you don't have to come to a dead stop right then, but finish your sentence and we're going to move on. In the middle of the forum, we will have our fabled lightning round, where we ask you to keep your answers to just one sentence. At the end of the forum, we will give you 90 seconds to make the case directly to voters and share your website or any other important information.
And if you're watching on Facebook and you have a question for the candidates, go ahead and type them in the comments, and our league volunteers will get to as many of them as we can. Time is very limited, and you can improve your chances that a question will be heard if you keep it concise and make it applicable to all candidates. And with that, I think we're ready to begin. Any questions from the candidates?
No, I think we're good.
Great. Let's dive into the questions.
Okay, let's get this thing started right now. And our first question, and we will start with you, Mr. Lamar, and then Mr. Miner, then on to Mr. Victor. And you get a whole minute to respond to this one here. What is the number one issue affecting District 3, and how do you propose to address it? One minute.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you guys for having this debate. It's really important, so I want to thank you guys for taking the time. But the number one issue facing District 3 is growth, right? Whether it's Walani, whether it's the new development that's going on Old Bain Bridge, we're seeing unmanaged, unbridled growth. And so what's happening is it's putting a lot of stress on roads like Old Bain Bridge. And so this used to be a town where you could get anywhere you wanted to in 15 minutes. Now, that commute is going up and up, and sometimes when people are going across town, that's up to 30 minutes and sometimes even an hour. And what's happening, we're seeing in our neighborhoods, people are trying to cut through neighborhoods to avoid the traffic. And so parents feel like they can't even allow their kids to go outside and play. And that hurts my heart to hear that. So if we want to grow, what we need to make sure that we're doing is having a plan for the traffic that is going to come along with the growth. And right now, we haven't seen that. So we have to put a proper plan in place where people can feel safe in their own neighborhoods and kids can go outside to play, because I want to see that happening.
Thank you. Okay, Rick Miner, same question here. Number one concern here for District 3.
Thank you very much. There's a lot of things that the county and District 3 need to continue to work on. One thing I've been focused on, perhaps among the most, has been revitalizing North Monroe. Number one gateway to Tallahassee, there are more people that come through the North Monroe I-10 interchange than in any other place in the county. And yet, if you talk to the neighbors that live near and around it, they will agree that we've seen a decline over the last several years. What I've done in the last four years is focus on this. We set up a citizens' task force to come up with a list of recommendations to improve North Monroe. Those recommendations were adopted by the county, and then we went one step further. We actually put those recommendations in the five-year strategic plan in Leon County. So now we will track those recommendations for five years improving North Monroe. Also, at the last meeting, I requested that we establish a CRA for North Monroe so that we can actually have some of the property tax dollars, doesn't increase taxes, but it takes some of the property tax dollars and diverts that to investments in North Monroe, that we can make North Monroe something we can be proud of again.
Thank you very much. And we end with you, Mr. Damon Victor here. Your top priority for District 3.
Thank you. Certainly, North Monroe is a sore thumb, the city and the county. And I really don't understand why Rick Miner is so proud of the citizens' task force, which had to be commissioned to figure out why things had gotten so bad over the last three and a half years, and also funding a CRA, an additional agency, to put more money into something that should have been fixed by Blueprint in the first place. You know, we have people in District 3 that are suffering, and they're neglected due to bad public policy put in place by this incumbent. He seems to go against the public interest time and time again, and sidelining North Monroe for shipping $80 million out to Walani was no answer. And given the fact that he's run for city commission three times and ended up in District 3, it's clear that this might not have even been the job he wanted. But for me, being your Leon County Commissioner in District 3, it's not a consolation prize, it's a calling. Thank you.
Mr. Miner, would you like to respond?
I definitely would.
20 seconds.
I definitely would. My opponents here are either uninformed or purposely misleading the people of District 3 in the county. North Monroe, the Blueprint project, which he says has been not funded, has been funded. And we're working on creating a CRA for the North Monroe to bring it back. So I think during this hour, you're going to see my opponents make up all kinds of narratives to benefit themselves.
Okay, thank you. Talk more about growth.
I would like to respond as well.
You weren't named, so we're generally if...
He said, "my opponents." That's me.
Okay, sure. Fair enough.
So when he talks about North Monroe seeing a decrease, like, that's absolutely, that's a lie. I mean, when people go outside and look at their neighborhoods, they see homeless tents all over, especially on that I-10 corridor. And they want to give, we have to provide housing for these people so we can get them the help they need and get them whatever, mental health, substance abuse, drug abuse, but ultimately get them out of that temporary housing to permanent housing. It is a big concern, and we have to look at it.
So I'm glad you mentioned housing, because that's the topic we're going to stay on and we'll be able to continue this discussion.
Yes, let's talk about affordable housing. So do you believe that the county commission is doing all it should to support affordable housing options? If not, what should the commission be doing? We're going to start with Rick Miner.
Okay. One minute, right? There's a lot going on.
Actually, a minute and 30.
Okay, perfect. We have, through the State Housing Initiative Partnership, funding that comes to the county to pay for, to help with down payment assistance and helping people buy homes. What we did back in February is actually set up a partnership with the city to where we are going to create a new inclusionary housing ordinance that encourages more affordable housing. State law prevents us from forcing developers to build more affordable housing. We have to entice them to do it, and if we were to force them, we would have to actually pay the developers to make them whole. So we are working within the law to do everything we can to encourage more affordable housing. We will be having some new incentives coming back to us, which include density bonuses that will allow us to incorporate more motivation for developers to bring affordable housing to Leon County.
Thank you. We're going to move on to Damon Victor. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. The answer is no. The county is not doing enough. You know, we need to be proactive. We need to protect tenants' rights, and we need to prevent families from losing their home. The Lord of Law does, you know, does heavily favor landlords and property owners, but the Florida Constitution will restrict us from making any sort of rent controls municipally unless there is an emergency. But there are plenty of tools in the toolbox, we're just not using them. Some of the things that were mentioned in addition to that are, we could look at our zoning laws regarding parking. We don't need parking, we might be able to convert those into properties that could be used for affordable housing. We need to embrace innovations in our modular housing that's available, in our mobile housing that's available, and couple that with using Leon County lands to create more land trusts so that we can have communities where people can actually afford to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Damon Victor. And we'll move to Joey Lamar for the last response here. Is the county commission doing all it can for affordable housing options? And if not, what should the commission be doing?
Well, thank you for the question. You know, it seems like we're kind of at this dichotomy, right? You know, we say we want affordable housing, but yeah, the county just voted to look at giving $15 an hour. Well, when you look at some of the projects that they voted on, right, like the Walani project, those houses are starting at $200,000. So nobody making $15 an hour can afford a home in Walani. So how are we building affordable homes when we don't have the salaries and wages that match those demands? So if we're going to make a real commitment, then we need to do that. We have to remember, anytime you present a problem, the solution has to match the problem. It has to be as big, and when you don't do that, you're going to get bad results. People who are making $15 an hour cannot afford a new home right now. And so how can you say that you are for affordable housing when you don't have the wages to match that affordable housing?
Thank you, Joey.
All right, our next, we're going to change topics here. Our next question is inspired from the Urban League. By our count on Tallahassee.com, 12 people have been killed, 44 have been injured, and 70 serious shootings this year in the capital city and county. Just this week, two people were injured in two drive-by shootings an hour apart, and a man was stabbed, a man was stabbed by a stranger, and it books a million. What specific initiatives will you take to make our communities safe from crime? This is a minute and 30, and this question, we are starting with you, Damon Victor.
You know, three and a half years ago, Rick Miner stood here and told us that he was going to reduce crime. And now District 3 is arguably one of the most dangerous places in town. Certainly, the North Monroe Great Gateway is neither welcoming nor safe. When we look at this, the people had a plan for this. We were going to rebuild, repair, and revitalize North Monroe through Blueprint, which was, again, sidelined due to the votes made by Mr. Miner and Walani. Now, this is what happens when you ignore communities. You have infrastructure crumble, you have businesses closer-closing, then you have police patrols being less frequent, and then eventually they're not responding to calls like they are now. So what we need to do is we need to think about taking care of people, because when they feel left behind and there are no opportunities, some will turn to crime. Now, Rick Miner isn't taking care of the people in his district, but I will make the people of District 3 my top priority.
Thank you. Mr. Lamar.
Yeah, so crime is a very serious issue, and on the North Monroe corridor, it's, again, it's out of control, and it's out of control in our district, and the current commissioner hasn't done anything to fix that problem. And so when you look at crime, you're looking at an education problem, you're looking at a wages problem, you're looking at a jobs problem. So it's not just crime. See, it's our job to get ahead of crime, right? That's a social issue, right? It's police's job to investigate crime. That's when it's already happened. So when we really want to prevent crime, we need to start providing better jobs, we need to start making sure that we have better housing so people stay in their housing, because they don't get evicted, don't have multiple evictions on their record. We need to make sure that we are doing everything we can to give them an environment that is inclusive, because preventing crime and getting ahead of it is our responsibility, it's not law enforcement. But we got to make sure that we are taking care of business when it comes to crime.
Thank you. Mr. Miner, you have the last question. We'll give you 20 seconds additional if you want to talk, since both of your candidates invoked your name.
Great. Thank you very much. I think my opponents need to start paying attention. We've got Sheriff McNeil, who has put together his All In initiative, which incorporates everybody, asks the entire community to get in and help us fight crime. The county commission, including myself, have enthusiastically supported the Commission on the Status of Men and Boys, which will help us identify at-risk youth and help divert them from a potential life of crime to another career or something that basically avoids criminal behavior. And then I, myself, have pushed for funding from the county, which passed, for anti-human trafficking training. So because of my initiative, working with a nonprofit, we now have free online training available to anyone in Leon County to go and take a look at how we can all work together to fight human trafficking. That happened because of me. Now, one thing that I wanted to talk about is, you know, our law enforcement people put their lives on the line for us every day. In fact, just on June 8th, we had an officer who was killed in light of duty. Well, one of my opponents was invited, we were all invited to speak to law enforcement about the issues this community. One of my opponents refused to talk to law enforcement about the issues that are here in Leon County. That's not leadership. What I have done, I've had history of working with law enforcement, bringing different people together to come up with solutions. What my opponent did was basically put up a wall between himself and law enforcement. That's not the kind of leadership we need in this county. We don't need someone being divisive and creating problems. We need people that are actually reaching across the aisle, building bridges to solve problems.
Thank you. I'm not sure which candidate that would be, but if that candidate would like to respond, you're welcome to. Okay.
Coming up.
I do have a follow-up on this question, and this is a 30-second follow-up. It's going to be tight. On a scale of 1 to 10, how would you rate the current effectiveness of LC SO and TPD to addressing the issue of gun violence? So this is a quick one, starting with you, Joey Lamar.
Um, I mean, I'll give him about an eight or a nine. I mean, obviously, gun violence is the most pressing issue here, and if we looked at Walt McNeil's report, you know, we saw it. But I think, again, the solution has to be as big as the problem, so it can't just be one initiative or two initiatives. We have to look at attacking this from every single angle. So that's every possible thing that we can do, we need to do it. Full frontal attack on this problem so we can get the job done. But gun violence is one of the most prevalent issues in our community, and it can't just be one solution. Attack it from every single angle that you can.
Thank you. Rick Miner.
I would give, I would give them an eight. They are doing, I think, a pretty good job within the state law and federal law to try to curb gun violence. And part of what I talked about with All In and the Commission on Status of Men and Boys is going to help with that. One thing that we all have been watching, I think, has been the House and Senate with the gun legislation that is currently being debated. At the last meeting of the county commission, I asked my colleagues to approve a letter going to the US senators in our state urging them to support that legislation. So we all need to work on that together and make it happen.
Thank you. Damon Victor.
Thank you. 7.5, only because in the court of public opinion, people want to see more happening. And we can look at the stats, and that might, you know, not bear out, but I think people want to see more happening. And I do appreciate the efforts on both the TPD and Leon County sheriffs on mental health initiatives and developing new officers to deal with those calls.
Thank you.
Folks, we have a series of questions here, which is comprised of one main question and a number of follow-ups that regard economic development, which has already been referenced with particular intensity here for District 3. Of course, numerous neighborhoods within Tallahassee and Leon County, including District 3, struggling with poverty, and what role should local economic development efforts and economic development initiatives play in promoting a more equitable prosperity? And what is one specific plan that you would implement to make meaningful progress in this challenge? And Damon Victor, if we can start with you on that, please, and you have a minute 30 for this one, sir.
Thank you. You know, when I think about the neighbors down on West Tharp Street and how they are dealing with infrastructure problems, and the residents there and the business owners have heard over the years, empty promises from politicians about how they're going to improve their sidewalks and make things safer, and, you know, meanwhile pedestrians are dying, and, you know, that's just not right. And what we need to do is we need to remember that the infrastructure that we put into neighborhoods, these social, that have social impact, such as sidewalks, so that people don't have to risk their lives in order to get to school or grocery stores, or in the case of Tharp Street, a nearby park. So what I think what we should do is remember that the infrastructure works hand-in-hand with development, and that we don't just let the developers run roughshod. You know, in my line of work, orthotics and prosthetics, we empathize first, and then we come up with ideas, and then we build. And now it seems like we're doing it backwards. We're coming up with these big projects, trying to figure out ideas to pay for them, and then shoehorn them in where we think they're going to help, and that's not the right way to develop.
Okay, Mr. Miner, same question for you, sir.
Thank you very much. You know, before I became a county commissioner, I was the CEO of our regional food bank here, and I saw firsthand people who were struggling with just simply getting access to nutritional food. And one thing that can help us address food insecurity, poverty, affordable housing shortages, and the lack of it, as well as crime, is to help people earn more. You know, one thing that we can do, which I've talked about in the past, is helping us cultivate in the Mag Lab, a magnetics industry cluster, to help push up salaries. I was actually in DC a couple weeks ago at the AWS Summit to focus on cloud computing skills. You've got TCC, Lively, that are working really hard to develop IT skills in people that live, within people that live here. With some of the IT skills that are now available to us, we can help people, even without a college degree, earn skills that can make them more marketable and be able to earn incomes. Because the key to a lot of our social problems, you know, poverty, food insecurity and such, is helping people be able to earn more for themselves and their families.
Okay, and if we could end up with you, please, Mr. Lamar, on that question.
Okay, this is about economic development?
This would be economic development specific.
All right, because my opponent was talking about food insecurity or something.
Well, they're related.
Okay, when I'm talking, don't talk. All right, so the issue that I would do is small businesses. We have to invest in our small businesses. They are the lifeline of our community, and we have to make sure that we are investing properly in them. So it's, you know, it's nice to have these chain restaurants, but I want to see local business be the leading employer in our county, right? And to do that, we have to make a massive investment in it. And so the Office of Economic Vitality can't do that right now, because we've given $20 million, $27 amortized to Florida State. So we have bankrupted that fund until 2028. And so we have to make a bigger investment in small businesses. And I'm disappointed in my opponent, because he was talking about everything else besides economic development. And what that tells you is he does not have a plan. Do not elect somebody who does not have a plan.
We have a follow-up here, and since you brought it up here, Mr. Lamar, let's give you the first crack at the follow-up. What specific kinds of development for District 3, which you began to mention there, do you think would be most amenable to the kinds of goals and objectives that you were just talking about? And more importantly, how do you get them to locate there? And let's give you 45 seconds on that one.
Well, again, the emphasis should be small businesses. And so working with our small businesses to say, okay, what type of shop do you want to set up? How can we help you? Okay, can we give you this investment to, you know, get you started with capital? And so a lot of small businesses, and even some of our elected officials have had small businesses, and they've had help through the city or the county to help get this done. And so, again, investing in local businesses and giving them the financial resources they need, the startup capital, is essential. Most businesses don't make it through the first year, and it's a capital issue. So we have to make sure that on the front end, we are helping them in as many ways as we can. And so, again, let's grow this thing from the ground up. Small businesses first. That should be our focus, and that's how we save this local economy.
Okay, Damon Victor, your thought on local types of development, entrepreneurs, whatever, and how do you make that happen specifically?
Well, it's interesting, because up in D3, we don't have a lot of innovation, there's no innovation park, the, a lot of activity that we see in economic development isn't really happening. And that's because of some difficult land use issues regarding Lake Jackson and some other things. Something I would work on is, when we were improving the infrastructure on Tharp Street, but also working with the Housing Finance Administration that can encourage developers to obtain financing to build some projects that we want to see, like affordable housing in District 3. Thank you.
Okay, very good. And Mr. Miner, too.
Thank you. Well, my opponent, Joey, may not know this, because he hasn't been living in Tallahassee for very long, but one of the best ways that we can do this is work with the small businesses that already exist. Just, you know, there's hundreds of IT businesses, small businesses, here in Leon County that are actively working to work together to build up that industry here in Tallahassee. Launch tally is led by some really great IT, small business owners, that are doing a great job on their own and also partnering with local government and other partners to really make some inroads. In fact, if you talk to them, and I have, they would tell you that in the next five years, maybe 10 years, we're going to see Tallahassee emerge as a regional tech hub, which is terrific news, and we've got to work with our small businesses and reach out to those businesses and get those relationships going so we can make it happen.
Oh, right, sorry. And while we're in...
I'm sorry, may I respond? He invoked my name.
Just, yeah, 20 seconds, please, sir.
Rick, if I could hug you right now, I would, because that's the best thing that you've ever said. I haven't been here that long, but that means that when I get in office, I can only work for the people. I don't know who's supposed to be running this city, who's supposed to be running this county. So you want somebody in office who can only work for the people, and that's me. That's the best thing about my campaign, and I'm so glad you brought it up. Thank you. If I could hug you, I would.
Can I get a rebuttal on that?
Yes, go ahead, sir. 20 seconds.
Joey, you've lived in Tallahassee for, what, two years? I've got food in my freezer at home that has been in there longer than Joey Lamar has been in Tallahassee.
Well, don't eat it.
Now, I may have to clean out my freezer, but it's a fact. And welcome to Tallahassee, welcome to Leon County. I think that, I think District 3 voters welcome people like Joey Lamar coming into town. We want more people coming in, but they want someone who's been here longer.
Okay, folks, another follow-up.
Can I rebut? I'm sorry.
I think one rebuttal per question.
So I just want, I just want to thank, I want to thank Rick Miner for saying that comment, but at the same...
One rebuttal per, we're going to keep things moving.
Because we have something else here to talk about. When it comes to a very tightly related topic to what we've been discussing, which is workforce and jobs, you can have all the businesses in the world, but if you don't have a developed workforce to go ahead and help those businesses to achieve and thrive, it's kind of a moot point. So when it comes to workforce development and job creation, specifically in District 3, how do you make that happen, being very focused geographically in your own district? And while we're talking to you here, Mr. Lamar, go ahead and talk about how you do that.
Okay, repeat the question for me one more time.
This is going to be workforce and job development specifically for District 3. We were just talking about, you know, job development and the type of, or development as far as the actual physical presence of structures and enterprises in that area, but how... in that area, but how do you then get the workforce that those places will need to thrive and succeed?
Well, uh, with most people, you know, what they look at when they look to a job is salary. So we have to be able to make sure we're offering competitive wages. You know, one of the things that kind of bothers me about Leon County right now is we have Florida State, BAMU and TCC, right? Three of the best institutions in the nation. And we train up, you know, these people every year, these college graduates, and then we send them off to New York, Houston, you know, Atlanta, you know, Chicago, wherever you want to go. We got to keep some of that talent here, right? Like, we got to get some of these, some of these boutique accounting firms, some of these boutique marketing firms. We got to get them here so we can keep our homegrown talent in Tallahassee.
Okay, Damon Victor, your thoughts there on workforce development and, uh, jobs in District Three?
Thank you. Um, you know, in my work, orthotics and prosthetics, uh, I train. I am a vocational trainer. As a matter of fact, I go on international medical service trips and I train internationally. And some of those lessons that I've brought home, we can understand how we can make these things work. Apprenticeships work. You give somebody a skill, they carry that with them for their whole life. Currently, right now in District Three and Leon County, we are in a childcare crisis. We don't have enough, uh, facilities and childcare professionals to take care of children while women go to work. We're also in a demographic drought, which means that we don't have enough trades workers and blue collar workers, and so we need to work on that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, Mr. Minor, we'll end up with you here.
Thank you, yeah. It, it comes down to working with, uh, our partners at TCC and Lively and at the Domi Station, which is an entrepreneurial company, a lab. It comes with working with those folks, uh, and being, and connecting small businesses as well as folks who want to start up new businesses so that we can build those skills. Um, it really comes down to that. You have to know the people in this community to work with them, uh, in order to get things done. And, uh, uh, you've got a tremendous number of people in this town that are all working very hard, they're very talented, trying to make this community better. I think I'm one of them. Uh, I know there are a lot of people in this town that, uh, that, that work with us to make those things happen.
Okay, final follow-up here, gentlemen. Uh, one minute here, if we could, please. Homelessness, which we have already referenced, has become a very visible problem here throughout Leon County, but specifically, as has already been mentioned in this forum, in District Three. So what's one thing that you think could be done to help on that front? Mr. Victor, start with you.
Thank you. You know, when COVID hit, um, the Kearney Center shut down and there were vouchers that were given to make sure the homeless had a place to stay. Um, I believe that the Kearney Center does a good job, but they're overloaded. Uh, they just asked for $3 million in additional funding and I'm not sure if that's going to get improved, but I believe that's money that we could spend on our own facilities in Leon County for mental health and, um, outpatient care. And I just think that's really important, that we should work on the mental health aspect of it and have place for people to go before they end up homeless so that they can deal with their mental health issues before it turns into a substance abuse issue and before they lose their job and their home. Thank you.
Rick Minor, homelessness, your turn.
Thank you very much. Um, homelessness is a problem around the country. Uh, if you go to Washington DC, Portland, Oregon, every major city has seen a, a market increase in homelessness. It's, it's a, it's a, it's a terrible national trend. But here locally, we need to address it. We need to solve the problem. Um, during the pandemic, the Kearney Center, uh, basically had over 300 people that were struggling with homelessness live in hotel rooms in the North Monroe I-10 corridor. Um, I negotiated with the Kearney Center to have those folks, uh, as soon as possible, earlier than planned, come into the Kearney Center and receive some of the comprehensive care that they need, uh, to, to move towards stable housing. Um, at the county and the city, we invested a record amount of funding into our homelessness efforts because we know it's a problem. Uh, we've also set up the street outreach team, which I have used myself, uh, to actually go there. These are trained counselors that go to homelessness camps, talking with folks, gaining their trust, um, and encouraging them to get off the streets and into some of the, um, some of the facilities that we have to help them find stable housing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lamar.
Uh, thank you so much. Like, this is one of the issues I'm really passionate about, um, and it's disappointing that the current commissioner hasn't done anything on homelessness and has not, you know, has not really tackled this problem as aggressively as, as he should. What we have to do is get people in housing first, individual units. This does so much for their mental health. It will help stabilize them. Then, we have to provide them any service they need, whether that's mental health, substance abuse, drug abuse. Then, our goal should be to help them find jobs, to get them out of that temporary housing into permanent housing of their own. Homelessness is not something that should be normalized. It's not something that we should be accepting in our district. And we have to make sure that we are doing everything possible, everything possible to get it done. And so I have a plan to get that done and we are going to get it done. And it's one of the most important issues in that district for people to feel safe in their own communities. And so I am really passionate about doing something about this crisis that has not been managed.
All right, sir, a name check brings a 20-second response. Mr. Minor.
Thank you, sir. Again, I don't know if my opponents are being just uninformed or, or purposely trying to mislead the people of District Three and the county. Um, and of the three of us, I, I believe I've got the most experience when it comes to solving homelessness and food insecurity and poverty with real solutions. Uh, we had 135 agency partners at, at the food bank that worked with people, in many cases delivering folks, uh, food to folks that are homeless. Thank you.
Okay, quick, quick response from each of you here, since this is very, very timely. A heat crisis now in effect. What do you do immediately to help the people who are on the street as we hit triple-digit temperatures there, Mr. Lamar?
And this question comes from our Facebook audience.
Yeah. Uh, again, it's got to be housing, right? Like, I mean, they're 100-degree temperatures and we, we've seen people, they're in their, uh, encampments when I've seen on North Monroe, so that means that they want housing. So they're telling you this, so we need to listen and give them what they need. We have to get that done.
Okay, Mr. Uh-
I don't think my opponent heard the question. It's about emergency assistance now, when you have three-digit degree temperatures. Uh, what we need to do is, is basically the same model as what we use for the cold night shelters, where we have, uh, nonprofits offer up space, bed space for folks, uh, that, uh, need to, to be somewhere under air conditioning, uh, so that they can spend the night there and the day, uh, when the temperature's as high as they are. When it's freezing, we do the same thing. We need to set up that same model, which already exists with already the partners to make that happen for folks during, uh, today, for example.
Okay, very good, Mr. Victor.
We don't have enough room for the, the homeless that we have now, let alone when it's hot, uh, in these temperatures. You know, we should, uh, be treating it like a cold night shelter is a hot night shelter as well, but we need to not fight against entities that are trying to make positive things happen in our community, such as CityWalk. We need to work with them, help them become compliant and, and get them the, not necessarily resources, but help them do the job that they want to do, and that is to help the homelessness, especially during hot or cold nights. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so let's turn the conversation to Blueprint. Okay, so funds from the penny sales tax program, as you hopefully know, is known as Blueprint, and they're required to be allocated into different pots and used for different purposes. Most of the funds are to be spent for infrastructure, such as road, sidewalks and parks, and 12% of the funds are to be spent for economic development projects, such as those having a general public purpose of improving, uh, local economies. So assuming you had a position on Doak Campbell and the allocation of $27 million to renovate it, explain how you came to your position, uh, for this money that was required to be spent for economic development projects. We're going to start with Rick Minor and you have a minute 30 seconds for this response.
Thank you very much. Well, you know, FSU is the number one economic driver in this county. And so initially, I, I had supported the idea of helping, uh, Florida State University with those dollars. But, um, after that first vote, I heard from everyone, everyone, uh, it seems, uh, about that, about that project. And what they told me was virtually the same thing. They love FSU. Uh, many of them went to FSU, they're Seminoles, but they didn't want those tax dollars, those blueprint sales tax dollars, going to that project. And they had very sound reasons. They had very good arguments. The opportunity cost is too high. There are too many other needs in this community. And raising $20 million plus $7 million to debt services is not an easy task for anybody, but Florida State University has the wherewithal to do that more than any organization in this county, including Blueprint. So one thing I, I really take pride in is listening to the folks I work for, the people and the voters, uh, the voters of District Three. So after hearing from them, you know, meetings, phone calls, emails, I made the decision that, uh, these dollars should be spent in other ways. Um, once I made that decision, I was, I was very happy with it. I've never looked back. Uh, some folks are very upset by it, but you have to stand up for what you think is right. And, uh, that's what I did and I'm, I'm proud of it.
Thank you, Rick Minor. Damon Victor, we'll go to you. 12% of the funds for Blueprint are supposed to be used for economic development projects. Explain how you came to a position on, uh, the allocation of 27 million to Doak Campbell Stable Stadium.
From the beginning, Rick Minor was for this funding. I was against it. The economic development dollars could have been used for North Monroe Street and to help the businesses out there, for example. But for seven months, the incumbent ignored public outcry, including my own, only to make an 11th hour reversal to save political face. I don't think that's listening to the people. I think that's saving your own skin. The FSU has so much funding coming from the state, coming from the boosters, coming from tuition, that they didn't need to come and try and take all of the money off our table for economic development in our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Damon Victor. Joey Lamar, why don't you finish us off?
Yes, thank you. Um, so what you're seeing in his last-minute reversal is that the commissioner's values no longer align with the district. And that doesn't make him a bad person, it just means we need somebody else in office. Um, this money could have been used to attract a company like Ford. Ford was looking for a place to build their electric vehicles and we could have at least made an overture to Ford, right? That's a great American company that pays great salaries to come to Tallahassee and build their electric vehicle plant. We can't do that now. And the other thing, the last thing is, when that vote happened, this was a procedural thing. And my opponent doesn't know Robert's Rules of Order. So when the, the amendment was made, Kristen Dozier made the motion, the subsidiary motion was made to make an amendment, he could have made a secondary amendment to the primary amendment, right? And so he could have gone back to the original amendment, he could have done anything, but when you don't know the rules of the game, you can't play. Right now, we have a commissioner who just figured out, let's say he's a football coach and he just figured out that there are four quarters to the game, right? We got a lawyer who just walked in the courtroom and he goes, oh, I don't have a degree, but I've watched every episode of Law and Order. We got to have somebody in office who knows the rules of the game. When you want to play, you got to know the procedural rules. He didn't know them. And if you don't know the rules, how can you represent the district?
Rick Minor, a 20-second rebuttal, please.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think my opponents aren't aware of, of how the process works. You know, there were three votes. The first vote, um, was taken and as, after that first vote was taken, that's when we got the vast majority of comments from people. And, uh, I said at the time, at the, at the next meeting, when I voted against it, and then at the third vote, when I voted against it again, uh, the ratio of people that, that wanted the, uh, funding not to go forward was 28 to one. For every, 28 people was against the funding, for every one that was not.
We just going to let him keep talking?
Thank you. We have a follow-up and Joey, I'm going to start with you on this follow-up. Was there a middle ground? Why couldn't we have reached it if there was?
So, so it's, it's always very important to be able to work with people from both sides of the aisle. Um, but the thing that I don't like about that, this middle ground idea, is that is some, somehow it feels like we were, FSU was entitled to it. I'm for government assistance to people who are in need, but if you are not in need, then we shouldn't be assisting you. And so I'm very big on self-reliance. And so if you have a stadium, you need to be taking care of it. But if you are in need, we can help you, but we can't be, we, we shouldn't be giving funds when they're not needed. So it has to be on a needs basis and that's not what this was.
Thank you. Damon, we're going to go to you. Damon Victor, was there a middle ground and why couldn't we reach it?
Thank you. You know, this funding originated as a conference center that would have involved the Mag Lab and a national magnetic symposium every year that would have been a great investment. It would have brought in a lot of, of economic vitality and, and, and interest to our area. But when that changed and morphed into a stadium upgrade, you know, that, that money was never promised to them and there's no precedent set that they deserve this money. They are a well-funded institution and, you know, I honestly don't, don't blame them for coming for the money. I blame the commissioners for giving it to them.
Thank you, Damon Victor and Rick Minor. You'll have the final word on this one. Was there a middle ground on the Doak Campbell Stadium vote and why couldn't we reach it?
I think there could have been. I mean, you've got, uh, um, you know, County Commissioner Marian Lindley, former county commissioner, proposed that, uh, you know, um, uh, and one thing that, that we had at that very first meeting, um, I actually took the initiative to try to propose some type of middle ground, uh, but we didn't have the votes. Uh, within Blueprint, you need to have a majority of, uh, votes on the county and, and city side, and we didn't have that. Um, once people started to really understand what this project was all about and we heard from everybody, from me again, at the ratio of 28 to one, those against and four, um, I think we had to go in the direction we went. That my vote had to go in the direction it had to.
All right, we are now going to change things up a little bit and go to our lightning round. Y'all have kept this thing moving pretty swiftly, so you're going to be pros in this. Uh, the rules are, and most of these questions are kind of a yes or no, or, uh, a, but, but each of them allows one sentence response. Obviously, you can add an and and a because, but hopefully you're not going to give us a lot of run-on sentences. So, we're going to start, uh, simply here. What single thing makes District Three distinct from all others? Damon Victor.
Well, it's the jewel of Leon County, Lake Jackson. It's a wonderful, wonderful area. We have many parks. It's down a little bit now. It has been showing us its dynamic system. Thank you.
All right, Joey Lamar.
Uh, the best thing to me about Leon County when I knock doors is the people and that's what makes me want to run. So, yeah, I'm so happy about that.
Rick Minor.
Uh, Joey took my answer. It, it really is the people who live there. It's a very diverse group of people, uh, all different, you know, occupations and, uh, it's a great district. I'm proud of it. Wouldn't want to represent any other one.
All right. Uh, how many county commission meetings have you attended and how many have you spoken at and on what topics? Joey Lamar.
Um, I haven't attended any county commissions, but I read the minutes, uh, and I've spoken at the Blueprint meeting.
Yeah, thank you. Rick Minor. Okay, thank you. Rick Minor.
Too many to count, in both, attended as well as spoken.
Damon Victor.
It's about 10 at this point. And when I did speak, it was at a Blueprint meeting about misuse of Blueprint funding. Thank you.
Thank you. What issue or circumstance keeps you up at night when it comes to being a leader or potential leader of Tallahassee and Leon County? Starting with you, Rick.
There's not one. Smart growth, gun violence, crime, workforce development, poverty.
Damon Victor.
I would worry about the homeless and the people that are out on the streets and keeping them safe.
Okay, Joey Lamar.
The public infrastructure, making sure that kids have a safe sidewalk to walk to catch the school bus. That really is important to me.
Thank you. As a county commissioner, you will be working with your counterparts and the city commissioner toward that end. Who will you endorse for mayor of Tallahassee and why? Damon Victor.
I can't get behind Mayor John Daley with 12 years of mismanagement in this district. And so I'll be supporting Dozier.
Joey Lamar.
I'm not going to endorse any candidate. I wish them the best in their race.
Rick Minor.
I know both of them. There are parts of them I like in each of them. They're very different people in terms of personality and management style. I'm going to let the voters decide.
Okay. What's one pledge you would make to voters right now that you will accomplish if elected? Joey Lamar.
We are going to tackle homelessness.
Thank you. Rick Minor.
We are going to revitalize North Monroe and bring it back.
Thank you. Damon Victor.
We're going to improve and finish Tharp Street, finally.
Thank you. Are there any limits on who you will accept campaign contributions from? Rick Minor.
Yes. I hadn't thought about it in particular, but I have actually in the past have pledged not to accept any funds from the NRA. And I would do that again.
Damon Victor.
I will not accept bundled donations from the large moneyed interests that have controlled and dominated local politics for too long. And I have returned PAC money that has been donated to this campaign.
Can you give me an example?
I don't want to give their names for their anonymity, but the point is, is that it happened and it hurt. But it's really important to do the right thing and walk the walk.
Okay, Joey Lamar.
Developers, making sure that I'm funded by the people because that's who I'm going to be working for.
Okay, thank you. Aside from family, very important caveat, aside from family, who do you view as your local mentor in life and in pursuing this seat? Damon Victor.
That would be Bob Brackliff. He voted on the merits. He didn't take any guff. And he can look himself in the mirror after the end of this whole process.
Joey Lamar.
Mentor? I don't really have a mentor. I just want to work for the people. So that's who I'm working for.
Okay, Rick Minor.
There's not one. And I'm supposed to answer the question with one. I mean, I think about some of the really great statesmen, Mary Ann Lindley and a lot of other folks that I consider friends that I sit down and talk to, have coffee with, but many others.
Name one specific thing the county is not spending enough money on and one thing the county is spending too much money on. Joey Lamar.
So one of the things that not spent enough money on is Star Metro because we need to expand it. I know that's a city issue. But as it continues to grow, we continue to grow, we got to spend more money on Star Metro. We are spending too much money on tourism.
I would say North Monroe, but we are changing that and it's coming. We know that it's coming and I've been working on it and it's paying off. In terms of too much, I will tell you Leon County's budget is one of the leanest in the state. We are very, very good at making sure we maximize taxpayer dollars.
Thank you. Damon Victor.
I think that we could definitely be spending more on affordable housing and leveraging the HFA in order to make that happen. And we spent too much as a county on the Blueprint Board, spending all this money in Waloney for people that don't even live here. You get me to take care of the people that are here now.
Thank you. Last lightning round question. You've almost made it through. What's the single biggest thing you've done in the community to make District 3 a better place to live? Looking for one thing. Rick Minor.
It's a lot more than this, but I really am proud of the work that's... We are changing North Monroe. We're turning the decline into something that we're all going to be proud of. Because once we do that, the rest of District 3 is going to be improving as well.
Okay, Damon Victor.
If you look on the Blueprint website, it says inactive on North Monroe Street, by the way. And, you know, the one thing I'm most proud of is helping with the Rotary Youth Camp for North Florida for children with disabilities. Voted the number one nonprofit in Tallahassee two years in a row. Thank you.
Joey Lamar.
One of the things I'm most proud of is actually getting out and doing the work. So going and having a community cleanup day and going through on Fulton Street and picking up trash in my community to help make it cleaner, safer, and better.
Thank you. Y'all did it. Well done.
Very good.
We're back to a little bit longer form. The end is closer inside. I think we've got a few questions before closing arguments. WFSU, I think you have the next question.
Here we go. All right. Since we seem to be returning to certain themes, if you will. And one of them is what's going on with the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency. And as I'm sure you're all aware, recent meetings of the County Commission and Blueprint have been, in some instances, shall we say, less than cordial. There's been some tension there, for sure. So how would you assess the level of civility in these encounters? And should we be doing something different to kind of bring the temperature down? And Mr. Lamar, we'll start with you on that one.
So when you say it's been, you know, less than civil, that means that people are very passionate about where they stay and where they live. And that is absolutely great. Like, we need people who care about their city and their community. And so we need that. But the rhetoric has to be toned down. But the passion is there and we want to keep it there. Also, I'm really disappointed in Blueprint because Blueprint 2020 was voted in six years ahead of Blueprint 2000 being voted out. And right now, if that were on the ballot today, I don't think the voters would vote for an extension. And if it came up to cancel it, they may even vote to cancel it because they no longer trust the people who are in office currently to get the job done and manage those funds responsibly.
Okay, thank you, sir. Mr. Minor.
We need to focus more on issues and less on tribes. And I've said that before. We need folks that have a record of building bridges and bringing people together and not being divisive. And I go back to my example of refusing to meet with law enforcement. I think that's just a sign that, you know, one of my opponents has just not got the right priorities in terms of trying to offer what's good for this community. We need commissioners, and I believe I'm one, who will meet with different groups. You may not agree with them, but we all live together. We're all in this community together. And so we've got to work together to solve our problems. Even if you may not like what one group does or one policy that they advocate for, you've got to reach across the aisle and build those bridges. And so I think I've got the temperament and personality that facilitates that. For people that have been watching my time on the County Commission, I think they'll tell you they agree. And I think that's really important. You know, national politics, state, local, I mean, you know, chaos is out there. But it does come up to us to be able to dial that back and build some more camaraderie.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Victor, please.
Thank you. You know, we must be allowed, you know, or excuse me, confrontations are going to happen. And we have to do that without losing our cool. That's number one. And though people may oppose certain projects or they may oppose my opinion, it's important for me to not take that personally. But we must have the ability to defend our concepts in the marketplace of ideas. And I'd like to address that it seems like Rick Minor is pointing at me. I haven't had any law enforcement invite me anywhere. So I don't know what he's talking about. And I don't know where he would get that information.
From law enforcement.
But I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Minor, any comment on that 20 seconds?
We were all invited to go to an interview with law enforcement to talk about our candidacies. We all got the same letter, I believe. And Mr. Victor did not attend. He refused to and told us he would not.
That is the lobbying arm for the law enforcement. That's not lobbying. That's not the law enforcement. So I've never turned down anything, any invitation to meet with our local law enforcement.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on a little bit and talk about ethics. Please discuss whether you feel the current ethics code for Leon County Government and for the Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency are adequate, especially regarding lobbyist regulation. Would you support independent ethics oversight for either or both of those two branches of government? One minute, and we're going to start with Rick Minor.
Thank you very much. One thing I've done and I'm very proud of over the last four years is I've led the County Commission's efforts on strengthening our ethics policies for the county. I initiated it, working with some folks in the community that really are ethics experts. So I initiated that at the County Commission, and we got those reforms adopted. I also took the lead on lobbyist reform within the County Commission. And so now we now have a new process with a more clear definition of what lobbyist is, of being a lobbyist is, as well as fines and possible even jail time for people that repeatedly violate the lobbying policies that we have. And then I went to Blueprint and started the same thing regarding lobbying reform. So I'm proud of what we've done. We can do more. I think there are groups out there that are lobbying but not getting paid directly for the lobbying. They're getting paid for other type of consulting advice. I think that's the next step we need to take a look at. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick Minor. Damon, we're going to go to you. Damon Victor, please discuss whether you feel the current ethics code for Leon County Commission and Blueprint Intergovernmental Agency are adequate, especially regarding lobbyist regulation? And would you support an independent ethics oversight for either or both of them? One minute.
Well, one of the reasons I want to be a county commissioner in Leon County is because it is held in high regard on the subject of ethics. I would like to see that carried over into Blueprint. And especially when it comes to the IMC, the Intergovernmental Management Committee, which is only made up of three people, the city manager, the county administrator, and the head of place. So I would like to see some sunshine laws, some oversight there. And initially, I've been speaking with some of the ethics officers of the Board of Independent Ethics at the city, seeing how we could make this happen. And I really believe that the mother of all ethics problems in local politics is campaign finance. And that's why from the very beginning, our campaign was focused on doing the right thing and walking the walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Damon Victor. Joey Lamar, finish us off here, please.
So when you talk about ethics, what you're really talking about is trust and having the public be able to trust you when you're on the board. And so I would like to see, you know, stronger ethics. You know, right now, we have, you know, current commissioner who will take campaign funds from companies who have done government projects in the past. And is that illegal? No. Is it ethical? No, because it looks like you are taking a campaign contribution kickback in the form of a campaign contribution. And so it's good to talk the talk, but are you really walking the walk? But we got to have commissioners on the board who actually are going to do what they say they're trying to do.
Thank you. County Administrator serves at the pleasure of the County Commission. Vince Long has been serving as county administrator since 2011. What letter grade would you give to Vince Long this year and why? What's he done well? What can he do better? One minute, and we begin with you, Damon Victor.
Could you repeat the question again?
Sure. The county administrator serves at the pleasure of the County Commission. Vince Long's been serving since 2011. What letter grade would you give to Vince this year and why? What's he done well? What can he do better?
I'd give him a B+. I think he handled the pandemic very well. I know he took the vanguard of a lot of counties, not just in Florida, but around the country. So I applaud him for that. I think he's taken care of his workers and the people of this county. I would like to see Vince Long embrace common sense ethics reforms at the Blueprint Board in regards to the IMC. Thank you.
Thank you. Joey Lamar.
I would give him a B+ as well. I think he's done great on a lot of things. One of the things that I've kind of heard from knocking doors is that, you know, sometimes people who work in the county feel like he's not as accessible as they need him to be. When they need him, people, you know, that kind of do the work, like their everyday work. And so if he could be a little bit more accessible, but overall, I'd give him a B+.
Rick Minor.
I would give him an A-. I've said this many times before. I think he's perhaps one of the best county administrators in the state of Florida. He's exceptional at running the county government on hiring the best people and working to retain those people. He did a great job during the pandemic, didn't play politics, helped us make our policy decisions based on what was going to protect the lives and the health of the people who live here. In terms of areas for improvement, I think he's so proud of the county government and the way it runs. I think sometimes he maybe tries to sugarcoat some of the things that are going on. I sometimes try to push him to just tell me straight what's going on because that's what I want to hear. But all in all, A-, he's definitely one of the best county administrators in the state of Florida.
Folks, a brief interruption, if we could, here. For those listening to the recorded version of this forum on WFSU 88.9 FM, we're going back to our regular programming. The rest of the forum and others will be archived on our WFSU and Tallahassee Democrat websites. Thank you for joining us here for the candidates for Leon County Board of County Commissioners, District 3, and more to come. Thanks for tuning in.
Are we done? Or do we go to commercial break?
No, we are going to continue. And now it's my turn.
But the end is inside. We've got one more long form question to follow up, and then...
Usually when they count you down on TV, like, it's done. Like, it's over. See you tomorrow.
It's the beauty of being online. Okay.
Okay, Joey Lamar, this is going to go to you first. Climate change can sometimes feel like too distant a concern when we're struggling with so many challenges in our community today. Are there signs of climate change you see already in Leon County? And who is or may become most affected? What can you do about it? What can the commission do about it?
Yeah, so...
You have one minute.
Okay. So when we look at, you know, climate change, I'm a really big advocate in supporting and believing in climate change. But there's this, you know, merit that has to go along with business. And so business means, you know, development. It means putting more carbon emissions in the air. And so people have to balance, like, we want to save the environment, but we also have to have food on our table. And so that's a conversation that needs to be balanced. Where I have seen the most people being affected is right now. We're in the midst of a heat wave, and we have homeless people who are still out on the streets. And we're going to see electricity bills go through the roof. So I would encourage anybody, if you can afford it, to get solar panels to try to lower your heat bill. I myself don't really run the air conditioning in my apartment. So I let it go up to about 85, 86. But I can take it. I'm a big boy. But I really am a really big believer in making sure that we can try to reduce our carbon emissions by as much as possible. But the most people affected, most vulnerable, would be our homelessness right now.
Thank you. We're going to move to Rick Minor. Same question.
Thank you very much. Yes, I mean, just go outside for about 10 seconds and you'll see the 104 degree temperature. Climate change is here. It's real. It's been caused mainly by humankind. What we've done at the county is incorporate into our five-year strategic plan the reduction of carbon emissions within our county government. We are pledging also to increase our electric vehicle fleet by 500%. And then one thing I'm really proud of is that I've actually pledged to have my campaign be carbon neutral. So at the end of the campaign, we're going to calculate the carbon generated by my campaign's activities, you know, mail pieces, driving around town, that type of thing. And then we pay in offset to negate the effects of that carbon. I've done that before for my other races. I hope my opponents will do the same. Last election cycle, 2020, I started a new initiative. I went out to all the local candidates that were running then, encouraged them to go carbon neutral campaign, and pledging them to do the same thing. We got 21 candidates here locally that made that pledge. We believe that's the only program of its type in the entire country.
Thank you. Damon Victor, climate change. Are you seeing signs here locally? And what, if anything, can we do about it? And who is most affected? One minute.
We've all seen the weather patterns change over... I've been here 35 years, and the weather patterns have completely changed. The heat is rising, and we're not getting as much rain as we used to off the Gulf. So those colloquial anecdotal things, we can all pay attention to those patterns. And what I think we need to do is be very aware of our most vulnerable. If we need to care for our elders, we need to make sure that as they age, they have affordable housing with correct air conditioning that provides communities for healthy living. Because as people age out, they're going, as ages increase, they need these affordable places to live. I think we need shaded sidewalks, and we should have designed more parks with water features for children to play on hot days. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to have a follow up on that similar line of questioning. Rick, we'll start with you, and you have 30 seconds. Are additional measures needed to protect our water resources? Please explain.
Yes, yes, very much so. You know, at times, Lake Jackson has had some algae blooms. And so we do need to invest more effort into making sure that our water bodies are clean. Lake Munson was just declared to have some serious issues with algae. I think the county does a good job. We test the water on a very regular basis. We work with people in the community to make them safe. But there's more that we can do in that area. Especially as the temperatures rise, you do see these algae blooms take place more frequently.
Thank you. Damon Victor, same question. Water resources.
Thank you. Over the course of the campaign, I've been able to follow some sewage spills that have happened, looked at our stormwater and wastewater systems, toured the wastewater facility, and found out that there are ways that we can work around climate change and that we can actually use methane reclamation to provide natural gas to our area. But when it comes to our water quality, we need to initiate more source point testing, which tells us how much phosphorus and how much nitrogen is in our groundwater. It's different levels in Georgia, and then it comes here and it gets higher. And by the time it gets to Walcol, it's twice as much as it should be. So we need to work on doing that here in our community.
Thank you. Joey Lamar.
All right, thank you. Lake Jackson is, you know, the primary lake in District 3. And it's been deemed, you know, like the war's been deemed like not safe. And so the county commissioner and this commissioner hasn't done a good job of making sure that it's gotten to an acceptable level. And so the algae bloom is out of control. When I knocked on those doors in the lecture area, you know, they said, you know, the county will come, but only when we call them. Well, we have to have a commissioner that is making sure that they're going, making the first step themselves. The constituents shouldn't be calling you. You should be contacting them, saying, we're going to be doing this.
Thank you.
All right, y'all made it to closing time. So this is your chance to speak directly to voters. Why should voters choose you? Starting with you, Damon Victor.
Thank you. I appreciate you all having me here. It's been a great debate, great forum. I want people to know, and they should vote for me because I want neighborhoods to be proactive and not reactive. It seems that when developments happen or infrastructure is built, that they're left out of the process or they come in too late, and then their opinion isn't actually taken in and acted upon. You know, I would also like people to know that when it comes to, you know, my political life that I've started here recently, you know, I did this doing the right thing for the right reasons and campaign finance, you know, making sure that I'm taking money from folks in this community. And I'm just overwhelmed with the goodwill and the graciousness of my neighbors. And I want people to know that I put my heart into this. I won't play games with political votes and that the people can count on the fact that I will stand with them. And I've gone to these meetings and you can see the difference. There's the people in the suits who seem to have the money and the power, and then you have the people over here in the flannel shirts and t-shirts. Well, I'm generally on this side. And although I'm not a part of a political party, and I'll work across the aisle to get things done and find best solutions, I want people to know that I stand with the regular folks in Leon County.
Thank you. Joey Lamar.
All right. So we've got to have a championship mentality, right? Champions get the job done. They don't make excuses, right? They get results. And something that we talk about in my campaign all the time, championship mentality. That means, are you getting the job done? And what are you doing to get it done? And really, people don't want to hear how hard you worked because they assume everybody works hard. They want to see the result. And so we have to make sure that we are producing results. We have to have that championship mentality, and we have to have it in this seat. Right now, we don't have it. And when you don't have a championship mentality, you don't have that winner's mentality, this is what happens. You have homelessness that's out of control in our district, crime on the rise in our district, unmanaged, unbridled growth, right? And then you also have crime continuing to rise. And so what we need to do is make sure we have that championship mentality and making sure that we are delivering for the people. It's the people who elect us, and these are the people who we should be serving first. And so my campaign has a championship mentality, and that's why we will get results done because it's the mindset. You can't make excuses. You got to get it done. Have to have a championship mentality.
Thank you. Rick Minor, you have the last word today.
If my opponents were running in a different race, in other words, if they were running for a different office, I still wouldn't vote for them. Nothing against them, but it's, they just have not shown a long-term commitment to District 3 and this community. It's like each of them woke up one morning and thought, I need to be a county commissioner. And right about the time they filed to run for office, they started being really busy and trying to show everybody how much they cared. I don't know what's in their heart, but I think District 3 voters have seen this time and time again.